Thursday, April thirteenth, I have all three selectmen present. I have Mr. Leo Martell recording for the citizens of Dunbar. Be with me for a moment.
If you can't figure that out, you better learn how to write fast.
Is it that front button way to the arrow? Get the computer type real quick.
That's a quick question, was was Lean gone over here tonight?
No, she's not.
I heard she's on vacation.
Yep, she's on vacation.
Okay, time is seven oh three, we have a board of selectmen meeting to order for December eighth.
December eighth.
Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
Be with me, gentlemen.
Right, recording, okay, all three selectmen are present. The town administrator is present. We have a special meeting, I mean, special meeting for, it was second time, it's one oh one P M, this schedule start off at one.
Are you gonna erase them all or?
It's alright.
You should do like I do when you're done with them.
Okay, it's recording, says R C, oh, it does, good. Okay, well, good, gentlemen. Alright, and I'm gonna, just for the record, I'm gonna just go through it again, we're calling the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, April thirteenth. Time is seven oh one. I have three selectmen present, the town administrator is not present. Recording for the citizens of Dunbar, this is Mr. Leo Martell. Thank you, Leo. Okay, gentlemen, I have some minutes from previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second Justin's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't have any.
Don't even see them.
Uh, yes, but things, they've been approved, so if I go through them and they're leaning them backwards, we'll sign them, okay?
Yep.
We're gonna move right along to a public comment first. Gentlemen, you're on the agenda, so we're gonna go to the back row, public comment.
No, thank you.
Bob?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. For the first thing on the agenda, we have, uh, Mr. John, help me with the last thing, John?
Yeah, Del Signori.
Yeah, Del Signori.
Yeah, we're with Standard Power out of Nashville.
Okay.
And, uh.
You have the floor, sir.
Well, Robert Hayden.
So, I'm Bob Hayden.
Okay.
I'm the president and chief technical officer of the company. And John asked me to join him tonight to talk to you a little bit and to talk promptly. But first, I have to ask you a question. Where are you on that map? Where are we sitting?
On this map?
Yes, sir.
We're up in the center of town, so.
Oh, okay, I got it. I think I got it.
It's me right here.
Nice. That's beautiful. That photograph was taken by Bernice Perry.
Yeah.
And she's from Limeboro, where I'm from.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Did she do any other years?
I don't know the answer to that question, I've never seen her name attached to an aerial photo before. But she's a, she's a photographer, so I've seen her name attached to many.
Seen in nineteen eighty-one, went up at the state, but I haven't seen any earlier than nineteen forty-one.
Yeah. That's interesting. So, um, Standard Power is a energy company, we work primarily with electricity. Our core business has always been schools in town. I believe you're served by the Goffstown School District?
No.
No?
That's total, both schools.
Which one's both? Both, okay. So I think we're also with both, but we do do a lot of the schools in the surrounding towns. We provide them electricity at a lower rate, there's a chart in here that shows the rate typically how we've saved those schools in towns money over time. Uh, but this program is not for that specifically, it's for the residents. Community power allows the residents to buy electricity as a group. And really in a group with other communities to leverage the rate. I was asked a question before we officially started about why is the ever-source rate so high in comparison? And there's a chart later on in this document that shows the ever-source rate is twenty point two two one cents. And our rate for the first four contracted towns in the state, Keene, Swansea, Marlborough, and Wilton, has much less. Matter of fact, one of their, their default selection is a product that has ten percent extra renewable energy and has eleven point four seven cents. Um, so that's a nine cent savings, greater than nine cents over the ever-source default service. But the question posed was, how much money is ever-source making on that? And, and they really don't make anything on the supply cost. Uh, they continue, regardless of this program, to still service the wires, the poles, and the delivery of the electricity. We only provide a contract for the electricity. So they make profit on transmission and distribution, that's where the utilities make their money. They don't make money on this part of the business, so it's important to note that that price is a pass-through, that twenty cents. By law, they're required to buy that power in six-month chunks, in a three-day window, twice a year. Which is often the worst, some of the worst days of the year to buy that power. And short-term contracts are risky, so the suppliers charge extra. This program we're talking about tonight, we buy from the same suppliers that quote ever-source, Unitil, Liberty, for their default services when they go out to bid. Again, in those three-day windows, which hamstrings the utilities to buy their power at better rates. So not only can we buy the, choose the time we buy, we can choose the term we buy for. So the program we bought for Keene is for thirty months, and that was a real nice slice of time with the lowest possible rate. Um, so that's the price they will have for that three-year period. People who are in this plan, and it's an opt-out plan, which means if you do nothing, you're part of it in any given community. So you have to sign a card or go on a website and say, I don't wanna participate if you don't want to participate.
Once the town fathers sign into it.
Yes, or the select board needs to approve it.
Right.
The, a committee in the community needs to kind of marshal the project along. It's about an eight-meeting process to develop a plan and do the, um, required presentations to the community. There's several requirements that have to be met in public outreach to make sure that there's opportunities for folks to participate and ask questions.
Why, why, we are the quote-unquote quasi-purchasing agencies for the town. Why am I going to the rest of the community and doing eleven meetings with my community members? To sell your program?
Not eleven, but two is the statutory requirement for public outreach, and we do those meetings.
Now, understood, but what?
So like the energy committee would meet with these people and maybe present it to the town as a public meeting, offering it to the town?
Okay, I understand.
And then us as selectmen later can decide if we wanna go forward or not.
We'd be similar to a resident buying electricity from you. It'd be, we'd be no different than a resident buying electricity from you.
Yeah.
Well, in the end, you would say what your opinion was when it's in-town meeting on, in the, you know, for the folks to vote on at-town meeting.
What it's like, like, is, uh, I'm not sure if you are familiar, but sometimes, uh, when you're buying gas, because gas fluctuates, if you go to buy oil, and he calls for oil and I call for oil, typically it's the same price. When you buy gas, it varied by your credit, where you are, how much you use. So with all these variables, the gas companies stick in there, there's these little co-ops coming up where you can sign up for sometimes twenty-five dollars a year, you can buy the gas cheaper.
Right, for the last, for the last few years.
So for lack of a better word.
Right.
They're gonna offer the town a co-op to buy.
That's a good analogy.
They're gonna offer the town a co-op to buy electricity cheaper. And once they present it as a public thing, if we agree upon it as a selectman, for people in town to opt out, they have to sign a card opting out.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, and we would write the, or you would write, or we would help write the article for the, so, the town meeting vote.
So let me get this straight, you would, uh, change the entire, without, say, I have a gentleman over at the back row. You would change his electricity supplier without his knowledge?
No, he had, he was required to receive a mailing and have the opportunity to participate in public outreach.
And let's say, let's say he has, let's assume he's very happy with public service and has nothing, wants nothing to do with your company.
Yep.
Why is it going to a town meeting to decide this?
To allow in, as a large group, the community and other communities, to get the lower-priced electricity all at once.
I'll try and, uh.
But, but the thing is, are you forcing the entire town to switch over to your company, or is it by?
No, we're not forcing them because they're receiving a mailing where they can make a choice.
That's, that, that's not the right question, let me rephrase the question. Are they, are you requiring that all townspeople buy, say, the majority of the votes said, this is a great thing, this is like mother, um, apple pie and everything else, but we all want it. But there's maybe ten people over here that said, I like public service, I work for public service.
Right, that's the one.
Okay?
Yeah.
They said, I don't wanna opt in with you guys. Does he have an option not to opt in with you?
Of course.
Okay, that's why I wanna make sure.
Just sends a card, the card back, or goes on the website, or makes a call.
So you follow, like, they're gonna send the card back, they're gonna be.
Right, so, so in other words, but he's gotta be proactive in doing that.
Yes, he has to take the action to opt out.
Okay, I, I.
Now, for twenty years, this program has existed as opt-in, where people could elect to opt into these programs. They've never worked or proliferated.
Now, there are companies that you can opt into right now.
Oh, I know, the thing is, they've been proliferating, uh, they.
On the ever-source website, they list them all, because they want you to go. Ever-source doesn't wanna be in the supply business anymore. They get very bad press for being in the supply business.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll let you continue though.
No, that's cool, um, whatever's the, you know, the direction you wanna go is fine with me.
There's one other thing too, is we got a kind of a split town where like, I'm on Unitil in East Dunbar.
Yep.
They're on public service here too, so we'd have to address that.
Yep, we do that, we have other communities like that, uh, we also have some that are, have a smattering of co-op in there, and they're pretty unique on their own. But as a, as a broker of electricity in general, we're used to working with towns that have mixed usage or, like, say, schools in different towns that have different utilities, that's all normal for us.
Can I ask you one other thing, it seems to be the last two years, we've had the large swing in power over the winter months.
Yes, sir.
So the last two years, on our bill, halfway through the winter, it jumps.
Yes.
And then it goes back down the spring to the lower level.
A little bit, yeah, it went from twenty-two to twenty this year.
Well, no, well, I had Unitil.
Oh, okay, so I think this was twenty-five to nineteen.
It was ten or eleven when it first started, then it jumped up to like seventeen, then it went back down to ten or eleven, then it jumped up to like twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're on a little bit.
To seesaw, you know?
Yeah, Unitil's on a little different schedule. The four months of winter are the most expensive months for electricity, by far.
Right.
And Unitil has a schedule where they buy the winter rate and then they buy the summer rate. So the summer rate always costs less on the market.
Is their summer rate cheaper than your rate?
Is their summer rate, in, in the example we have, the plans we've announced, no.
I see that.
Yeah. And surely, if we average it out, absolutely not, but.
And now you're showing your red down here on the graph.
Yep.
At six point two two, and then you're fifteen point eight, which is cheaper than that.
Yep.
So does your plan split up and down too?
No.
What's the six point two?
This illustration is of past performance for municipal and school districts and other C N I stuff. That's been our normal average rates over that.
How do we get on the six point two two rate?
What's that?
Do we get on the six point two two rate?
Well, that was, that was during COVID, when the market crashed. So all this stuff, all this electricity stuff we talk about is based on the price of natural gas. That's the driver. And during the COVID years, people just shut down, nobody bought natural gas, heating requirements went down, generation for electricity went down, prices crashed. And ever since then, they've been going up, particularly with the action taken in Ukraine, that, that put a very heavy drain on natural gas. So natural gas prices during COVID were a buck fifty-four a decade term. They went up to nine fifty-six about the time things were launched in Ukraine. So that's the kind of swings we've seen in the primary driver of electricity costs.
And why is the co-op belongings such as swinging on these things?
The co, electric, New Hampshire Electric Co-op?
Not the, uh, co-op, I meant the P U C.
Oh, they have no control.
Why are they even there then?
That's a great question.
They're supposed to be protecting us from these swings and they're not doing it.
They're supposed to protect you from things that are wrong.
Large swings in power are wrong, to me.
That's a, that is an opinion that they do not share with you. Their opinion is they're protecting you from the utilities gouging you in the marketplace. And so if the utilities go out and get a bid on electricity and everybody bids twenty cents, that's the rate, and the P U C approves it. There's a future where the D O E and P U C, uh, look to more modern applications of electricity, where there's more flexibility to buy electricity and more of a two-way grid in the future, where every kilowatt hour moving back and forth is used to the greatest benefit it can be used. That future isn't here, but they, that's part of their job too, is looking into the future for what's right and wrong for our marketplace. And that's happening at a very, very, very slow pace.
I've seen that with the benefits of solar now, you get the delivery cost still there that never goes away.
Yeah, it's important to get that, most of that behind the meter. If you can get it behind the meter, that's when solar's the most valuable.
Right.
If you have to send it out and have it come back.
Most applications do that nowadays.
Most, most, yep.
They'll share batteries to hold it.
Yeah, batteries aren't ideal yet for, for that application, but anyway, all those things become part of community power as it moves along. Uh, we're looking at a combined, uh, sixty-five megawatts of solar projects across the state for the communities who've adopted this program. When we do public surveys, and we do that on every community, which is not a statutory requirement, but we reach out to community members with a questionnaire to get their voice as part of developing this plan for each town. And what we find out is that, you know, eighty percent of people want cheaper rates, and seventy percent of people want more renewables. So that's what we try to deliver.
What was your rate on the thirty-month one?
Um, it's in that chart, um.
Was it the fifteen point four or not?
No, no, um, we, we're at eleven one. Eleven one is the cheapest rate. And here's, here's the chart of the rates, so the, um, rate, the cheapest rate's eleven one, which is no extra renewables, and then with ten percent extra renewables, it's eleven forty-seven. And then if you wanna be a hundred percent green, it's thirteen point nine.
Now, would, explain the renewables to us.
Okay, so in New Hampshire, to be green or to be renewable, you have to retire a renewable energy credit. Every time a generator makes green energy or renewable energy, it's issued a credit called a renewable energy credit. There's a thing in the state called the Renewable Portfolio Standard. What's, that says how much renewable power has to be in, or how many RECs have to be retired by the utilities or anybody selling electricity. That number's twenty-three point four percent, or the number right, uh, here, that number. That's twenty-three point, twenty-three point four is the minimum requirement for electricity to be sold in the state of New Hampshire. That's the lowest number in the New England states. So every other state in the New England I S O has a higher level of renewable requirements. Now, the REC program was built to help renewables proliferate. It creates funding and subsidies akin to the subsidies Brown Power has gotten for decades to build out solar, wind, rebuild hydro, because they don't build new, but rebuild old hydro, monit, make it better. Make it more efficient, which is a big part of what Standard Power does, we're highly involved in small hydro. And we have an aggregation of, I don't know, thirty of them that we use to reduce rates to our regular customers. Okay, so to add more renewables, you have to buy RECs. So those are adding RECs to the power stack to, to increase the renewable portfolio over the renewable portfolio.
So we're buying these RECs to help offset somebody else to put solar in or whatever else.
Yeah, bottom line, yeah.
Okay, if I own, no, we're getting, like, when we sell our, when we own, we're gonna get some RECs for our solar panels.
Yep. And you will sell them, and if you, if you want us to sell them, we'll sell them for you. We, we, we market RECs.
I'll let you continue, I've got a couple of questions relating to our solar farm.
Okay, um, well, I, I know, uh, you, everybody said we were on a tight schedule and I've done fifteen minutes.
You, you don't gotta, let you go for another five.
Okay. So, we ask people, all of our towns, sign a one-page memorandum of understanding if they want us to work with them. And that means we'll do everything necessary to get them ready for town meeting and expect them to probably do the transaction on electricity with us once the town approves it. Uh, but we don't require it, we just expect it. Um, we don't charge anything for the service because we've had great success. We've signed, um, what's it, uh, thirteen M O Us, and we've executed all of them. They've all, they've all been approved at town meeting, the first four contracted a month ago, and their plan will launch in June. The next group is waiting for P U, P U C approval for their, uh, plans, and they will launch probably in August or September.
Does this eleven point ten percent on that basic at twenty-three point four renewable? Does that eleven ten include that renewable, or has it jumped up?
No, it's, it's no extra, it's just the law, the twenty-three point four, which is the law.
So it's included in that eleven ten cents?
Yes, sir.
Because like, if you look at your graph up above, it says, I'm willing to pay more, and I'm willing to pay.
Right, that's the survey results.
Right.
So some people.
So that's included in this eleven ten?
Is the requirement.
Yeah.
Every other rate has more. So I'm a goofy green guy, right? I have solar on my house, I don't, you know, and I'm putting a wind tower on, I wanna have an E V, but I don't wanna buy the E V until I can make my own electricity to run it. So, um, you know, I'm the guy who would pay the thirteen nine if I didn't make my own power, and I'm making most of my own now. And we help communities with that, those sorts of things, which speaks to your future questions. So that's the, that's how we start the process, is with this M O U. Then there has to be a committee that we work with, some, an entity that can either be highly involved or barely involved. And we've had, you know, both examples, we've had great committees that basically we say, hi, how you doing? And they've done the each step necessary in the eight-step process. So, uh, we're prepared to run it with as little or as much help as the community chooses to provide and have you ready for both town meeting and the plan prepared for execution and delivery to your community.
One thing Dunbar does have is we have an energy committee, with a group of people, they helped us work on this solar system, brought it to the select board, and then we brought that to the townspeople. They're working on the school now. This may save them a lot of work if we can get into a decent rate, but I would think that if we sent it to the energy committee, Mike, I'm not sure what you guys are thinking, but let them do some of the background and homework on it, yeah.
Literally, we would want to talk to your energy committee and encourage them to make a subcommittee.
Pull me on it, didn't you suck?
You just gotta sign some work. It was subtle.
I forgot I changed my clothes on that live here. Alright.
Yeah, we work with, we always work with the energy committee. If, if there's enough people in the committee, we make a subcommittee for.
It's not that large, it's about, maybe, it's a handful of people, maybe five people.
That's great, that's enough. So they, they basically take on the title of being the Community Power Committee Two, and we work with them to develop the plan, we come back to you when the plan's done, and you decide to put it on the town ballot.
Okay.
And that's how the process works.
I think I understand, the only, like, if Unitil went down to ten cents again in the summer months, you go, you're really looking at the winter months you're protecting yourself from.
Well, in that case, it's a great question, it really is, because in this plan, people can come and go as they choose. So there's no.
Penalty?
No penalties, no fees.
It'd be kind of nice to know that you're going to a company and get back out of easily when.
But there's, uh, there's ever-source charger hookup fee again.
No, they don't.
No, no, there's no hookup.
Okay.
The hookup never changes.
No, but, but paper hookup.
No, sir.
They stopped that.
Yeah, there's nothing like that, um, that's the law. The law says that people can opt out at any time and opt back in at any time. So if somebody had Unitil and their rates really didn't do that, they could jump in and out and just take the best rate for every six months.
Well, it's a lot nicer than other ones now, because typically you have to sign a.
A contract, yeah.
Six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, almost depending on what you choose.
Some of them now have, because of the, this law happening.
And they've gone back, it's nothing now.
Some of them now will give you a twelve-month contract with no early termination fees.
Yeah, that's what they're doing now.
Last time I looked at it, there was early termination.
Yeah, yeah, they were early termination fees for quite a while.
Now they don't care if you go back and forth, and they try to give you bonus cards to go with them and.
Direct, that was the direct mailing, the last one was the credit cards. So your, your solar questions are, sir?
Well, I'm gonna start off with, uh, elephant, bigger, the elephant question. Why is your company better than any other company that have come in and solicited me?
Oh, well, that's a great question, um, we're an existing company.
How many years?
Ten.
Okay.
So we've been doing, um, energy and renewable energy for many years. We've rebuilt a variety of hydros, so we're able to deliver electricity at lower rates.
Are you invested directly in infrastructure or just a purchaser?
Um, I do not own any generators other than my home.
No, I'm talking about the company.
The co.
You're the, okay.
I'm the president.
Understood.
So we don't own any, but our, our parent company does, our parent company owns a bunch of hydros all over New England.
Can you share your parent company with us?
Yes, Dichotomy Power.
Okay. Okay, um, fair, fair enough, uh. Right now, I sell back, I sell electricity to, uh, the surplus electricity at my, at a nice high rate. I only get to sell it at a lower rate to you, you only reimburse me for what you're selling it for, then.
Exactly, so for net metering at this time, utilities don't give us much, much info.
Right.
They, they, their, their E D I software doesn't communicate well with the third-party suppliers we all use. So, for net metering, we did a chart, and there's only a couple of places on the chart where it makes sense for somebody like you to be in the plan. So I make a hundred percent of my electricity with solar.
Gotcha.
At my home, hundred and fifteen actually. So I have an ever-increasing bank of money the utility owes me.
Correct.
And they owe it to me as a function of twenty cents for supply and ten cents for delivery.
Wow.
I wouldn't change.
Okay.
I wouldn't, and I wouldn't advise anybody to. So.
So now, as I can continue to sell my electricity to ever-source?
Yes, sir.
And still buy electricity from you?
You could, but I wouldn't advise you to.
Okay.
Unless you only make about forty-five percent of your own electricity.
We're not, we're not that high at all yet.
And, and you give ever-source ten, fifteen percent to net meter for you in the summer?
Okay.
And you get it back in the fall, then we are better.
We're not there yet.
As, at your residence?
No, um, residents have a lot of, a lot of issues, we have a lot of solar in town.
Okay, good.
And the residents will be interested in that, so I, I need, you need to articulate that well to the, to the energy committee.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a, gonna be a bone of contention.
Well, you know, we have hundreds of customers in Keene who we're having those conversations with now and telling them exactly where and what makes sense. Now, there is the scenario, and I'm gonna go deep here for a minute, so please excuse me. There's net metering one, and there's net metering two, the change occurred in twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, instead of net metering all the values, they went to a hundred percent of supply, a hundred percent of transmission, and twenty-five percent of distribution. So it lowered the amount that was fit, net metered back and forth. So in that scenario, with net metering and community power, you still accrue.
Credits.
The, the credits for transmission and distribution.
Okay.
So like about four cents. So in that scenario, some people would say, well, I'm still getting that extra money back, I wanna be a hundred percent green, I can do it with this. I'm gonna do a hundred percent green, I'm gonna get my five cents extra from my solar when I don't use it behind the meter. So those are the kind of conversations.
You're gonna have to have.
We're gonna have folks trained to answer them using the chart and telling them where it is.
I think every individual, like, someone who's at a hundred percent and selling the fif, extra hundred and fifteen percent, fifteen cent back versus someone who's already at fifty percent.
Yeah.
It's gonna be different for every people.
Absolutely, well, there's a point where it financially makes sense.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And then there's a, a different point where it makes sense for the geeky green guy.
Right, understood, okay.
Yep.
But one, the cheer, the thing is, uh, then, the spearhead of our, uh, energy committee who spearheaded the, uh, the solar panels, drives a green car, and he's very green.
Yes. Well, I would, I would discuss with him the logic of having the E V if he doesn't charge it all off his solar.
Understood. Okay, um, let me see, he's. Now, here's one more question I have. You said I can go with ever-source, there's a whole list of companies there, ten.
Yep.
What makes you better if I can find a better rate from ever-source? Why, why should I go with you when I can just go to ever-source tomorrow and get, get a, a different company?
So, that's a good question, and here, it's a very easy answer, the cost of mass marketing to a situation where people can choose to opt in is extremely high. So they'll always cost three or four cents more than me, just because they have to spend the money on marketing.
Okay.
For me, I can do it in bulk, and I don't have to spend the same three or four cents, I'm probably spending two tenths or seven tenths of a cent, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
When I throw in, you know, when you throw in all of the extra stuff you do, like flyers and banners and stuff like that, I probably spend seven tenths of a cent.
Well, it all depends on what you make.
Yes, I make one tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. One tenth of a cent. So that's what we, we.
Where's your, where's your office out of?
Nashville.
Nashville, okay.
And I live in Limeboro.
Okay. Alright, uh, those are some of my questions, and you did well, thank you. Uh, but I think, I think, uh, I'd like to have our energy committee chime in here, cause we have some subject matter experts there.
Yep.
And um, I've been on the committee for two years and I think is I, I learned a lot, but I think is uh, I think uh, they're gonna ask tougher questions than I should.
That's great, and I'll come back for your committee when you ask.
Okay, I'll basically take your contact information email here.
Yep.
And I'll pass it to our energy committee, gentlemen, you all in favor of that?
I think so.
Dave, can bring it to them?
Yes. Thank you, you remind me that.
Are you guys brothers?
No.
Okay.
It's my nephew.
Ah.
Thank you though.
Any other questions on anything energy?
Yeah, I, I think this is good, thank you.
Send all your solar over into the line two at your house?
Um, it's probably behind the meter twenty thirty percent of the time, and then I met me the rest and I use most of it. I use, I, it's, I'm at a hundred and fifteen percent, and I'm gonna put the wind tower up this summer. So I'll be at a hundred and sixty percent, and a hundred and sixty percent or so, somewhere in that range, I'll be able to drive an E V. And make my own power for it.
And it uh, takes care of most of your delivery charge, cause you're netting more than what you're.
Yeah, I'm in old net metering, so it's a, it's a hundred percent of everything except for the bill fee, so I take thirteen eighty four a month.
What year did they change that?
Twenty eighteen.
People were set up long time ago.
Just let you know, we're uh, we're uh, making up maybe twenty to forty dollars a month on our solar panels, that's it. Because we're leasing it and we have a buy to lease program, which is very good, is allow the insu- installation company to take advantage of the uh, rebates.
You know, that, that we know the I R A bill, but the.
It changed, it changed.
It changed, you can get direct pay now.
Right, but the thing is, we're already tied into contract.
Yeah.
We're still making money, we're green, and uh, we, and we have an op- if we find some new technology, we can opt out of the contract.
Yeah, and in year six, you can buy it out.
Correct.
When it, at the farm mark.
So in year six, it was gonna be a, like a thirty two thousand dollar grant, we're not sure if that's available, our buyout's only fifty thousand anyway.
Yeah.
Well, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand system, hundred and sixty K system.
So, right now, for many communities and school districts, I talk to them now about their bonding capacity. Is if their bonding capa- capacity is significant, they can buy direct, the project direct and get the forty percent back. So the budget in year one or two nets hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We got a proposal just in front of the school that we have, we can put zero money upfront and create a, create a true specialty for the school. And the thing is, uh, it's, it's almost, it's almost, you gotta, it almost sounds too good.
The money is interesting, it's an interesting conundrum now.
Right.
With the direct pay.
Yeah.
And I don't suspect this is true here, but if in your, if you're in a low income community, it goes to forty percent.
Hey, this is, I would say, um, definitely in the middle.
Yeah.
We're not very low here.
Yeah.
Just trying to buy a house down the street.
No, I, I, they're gorgeous, those new homes.
On Mike's side of town.
They're gorgeous down there, just gorgeous.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sir, yeah, I think is you, this has been very formidable, uh, you got me by surprise, because I thought it was just gonna be a, one, uh. A supplier like one of those ones from the lists on, on ever source, so you pleasantly surprised.
We know them all.
Okay.
We know every.
But I, I thank you, I think is, uh, you opened my eyes and uh, I learned a little bit, thank you.
And, you know, whether it's the referral to the energy committee or just other questions, my card is on each of your documents.
Your, your, your sidekick was quiet, is he your, uh, technical advisor here?
Yeah, he's a technical advisor.
It's lying on the wall, but uh, yeah.
You're learning.
I'm just questioning, did, did, did any other company come by to talk about U D pop or I'm curious?
No, no.
Okay.
Uh, just, we've had solicitations over the several years of these uh, like third. Ever source list of people, I, there's two or three of them come and give us solicitation.
No community though.
Yeah.
You're the first community.
So there's, there's, there's two other entities out there that do this, there's a community power coalition, their rates are a nickel higher than ours for their first sounds, they, they are very. They, they, they spend a lot of money, we don't, um, and then there's Freedom Logistics, which they haven't really gotten out of the box, but they're in, in the business.
Well, being in business for ten years tells me your, your business model works.
It does, we've, you know, we've worked with schools and towns, that's been our bread and butter, and we've saved them millions and millions of dollars and.
Well, I like the concept that you can extend savings to the residents too, that expands your base too.
Oh, yeah.
For sure.
And here's the number, just one statistic, right? If the town and school use a million kilowatt hours, then the town uses ten million. So it's ten times as much power, and that, that's a good, that's a good business proposition for me.
Sir, I, I thank you for coming in.
Nice to meet you all.
Maybe, maybe do us a business in the future.
It'd be great. You got it, wanna hear?
I got two.
Thank you for letting me go over.
I'm sorry.
We'll be in touch also.
Definitely, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, library trustees, we have our M O U packet here. Uh, we, we, there was three changes and it was just retyped essentially, I think we all, we discussed it. Um, it just adds a Dunbar Library responsibilities. And Dun Town of Dunbar responsibilities, almost like not bullet format, but numbered format.
Did, did they add any more on to us, Mike?
I, no, I don't, I don't believe so, I, I, I'll let you take a look at it, we can make, just go ahead, they make motion accepted and sign that.
I'll take a look at it too.
Please. While you're doing that, um, I just wanna applaud, uh, give kudos to Mary came by and I, she showed me the change in hours, we have a. Another document here, um, she's not reducing the number, I was just doing a shifting, so we, I'll, I'll give, um. Groups which are maybe, tend to be a little more noisy, have more access to the building. So by just in her hours, she's really uh, balancing noise levels with uh, with the activities of the library, so I, I, I give kudos to the uh. The, to the library board of trustees for changing hours, just slightly, but it's gonna help everyone, it's all the community.
Yeah, two nights a week and one hour earlier?
Yeah, exactly.
And they're adjusting their Saturday hours to allow a little bit more.
Yeah, that's, that's all in there, so, all right, just to let you know, um. She also, when I talked to her this week, uh, our cleaning crew that, uh, does a cleaning for this building, did, did initial cleaning over there. Mary was just ecstatic with that level of cleaning, so for the record, we, we may have chose wisely there to keep them on doing that. They, they found a little problem with Dave already addressed with the X S L. Continue with the library, um, there, there's a request in here for a potential changing table. Uh, for diapers in the, in the restroom, which I think, Dave, aren't they small enough and they have to be handicapped access? On the changing tables?
I could not find any room to mount them on the wall with the way the stuff was spaced out that the architect required.
Okay.
I can run it by the architect at tomorrow's meeting if you want.
I, I, I'm not in a rush to do that, I, I wanna have, let's go a year and see how it, if we get demand for it and, you know.
I don't think it's a necessity.
Right, we're being, we're being nickel and dimed here a little bit, and I just.
And I'll, and I'll ask the architect why they hadn't thought of that, or, you know, there's probably a good reason they didn't, so.
This is FY, agreed.
Yeah.
And while you're still reading that, lastly, uh, Mary has a grand opening for reopening the, the bottom section of the library. It's scheduled for Saturday, April twenty ninth, ten to two, it's gonna be some light refreshments, some bag pipers there. And a reciting of Old to Dunbar by a special guest, to be determined, I don't know who it is. An official ribbon cutting that the uh, that the uh, library is gonna be reopened. Again, eleven to two on the twenty ninth, you all got a hand over that? Go ahead, Leo.
Yeah, just for clarification, you said the bottom part of the library is gonna have a grand opening. But the top part isn't the library.
Correct, you're absolutely correct, and uh, um. I kinda told, I suggest to Mary that it be, it stays secure there, because uh, we still have some uh, minor things to, to say tweak.
Yeah.
And uh, I don't wanna, I can just see the rainy day and we're already walking through with the brandy floors and. And so it may be, uh, we may need to talk about her some more, do I have, wanna talk to Mary about this thing next time we meet? Well, it's gonna be kinda tight though, so it's uh. Dave, your thoughts about the uh, grand reopening party?
What about it?
April, Saturday, April twenty ninth. Um. I, I, I think, they, they plan on, uh, I didn't understand it, I heard rumors that they're gonna give tours upstairs.
That's not a rumor, it's been on their website for a month.
Oh, wow.
I get the library email, I guess it's part of the town hall restoration committee and uh. I, I called Mary out on it uh, several times and again today, um.
Cause this doesn't say anything about tours upstairs.
It doesn't, but we're getting, but it's been on their internet for a month as part of that on the bottom part. And it said the town hall restoration people have offered to give the tours for people, which. I think we're ready for it, so I don't have a problem, I would have liked to have been asked of the board first, but.
Right, I mean, it's like, maybe, what happened if we opened it up and had to reserve someone that wanted to use that area?
Right.
It kinda seems like this was planned without anybody coming along.
So.
Um.
Makes quite a production, they planned out here.
And actions? I think let it go, it's the library trustees and the library doing it, um, at this point, and we are ready upstairs, but. It would have been nice to have a, a general open house for the whole building, myself, I thought. I thought the library opening up and maybe getting back on par, and then we should, we should have had a, a town open house for the entire building. Than just the library, but I mean, it is.
Bob, go ahead.
You wouldn't wanna can have them consider weather permitting, uh, you know, where you could put it off on a nice day. Cause if it's raining out and people are parking everywhere and walking across the lawn and they go traipsing upstairs. I mean, before you even use the building and it's used by the public, it's gonna look pretty bad, you know?
A brandy floors too, so what, what do you think?
Well, let's put a note down, weather permitting and on the bottom there and bring that up.
What are we gonna do about tours, are we gonna let her do tours up there, are we gonna do like a ribbon cutting?
Well, it's not her, it's not her, it's, it's Dunbar Restoration Committee, cause she's, she has no, she has no authority to go anywhere up there, it's Dunbar.
No, but they did put it on there, and then I saw down the bottom that in later weeks, it was said that, you know, the. Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee would give the tours, whether it's Margaret and that group or whatever, I'm not sure, but. However many people volunteer to have.
I, 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 again, I have no issues with that, I just don't want the place trashed. I like the idea of weather permitting, it's first aid.
I mean, it's the first time everybody's going to take tours up there, they're gonna walk around. You may not have someone get a chance to clean up.
I thought, take, you put a sign that take your shoes off.
At least the tours, the tours upstairs can be weather permitting, if it's a nice day, let them do it, if it's not, then come let them go upstairs.
Right.
She can still do her library reopening thing, but at least put the.
We could do that, especially being where the floors are fairly green right now, they haven't hardened a hundred percent.
Right, exactly.
So we'll tell them that for sure, on the weather permitting for the upstairs.
Still do hers, but don't do, don't do anything.
I think we have consensus there, consensus?
Okay.
All right, almost done, Dave?
Like, I don't think this came from Lena, I think it came from Mary.
Yeah, yes, I'm thinking too.
Um, I'm reading here and there's a couple of things that make me think that.
Okay.
Monitoring of upper town hall event coordination with library director and library schedule.
I, I.
That was exiled by our original. Maintain, maintain, and then over here, adhere to and oversee upper town hall usage guidelines.
Okay.
I mean, I think all of these things are repetitive to what we're.
Why, why don't we just defer that and have, have Mary come in and we'll uh, we can go through it one more time, similar.
Either Mary or, or pull out some of these items here, I think, cause.
Right, but if we pull them out, that means it's gotta go back to the uh, we, we, we can sign it, but they're gonna have to, uh, we have to come to some consensus.
Yeah, just. I don't know what you guys think, but I.
I'd rather get it right, because.
Upstairs is our entity, nothing to do with Mary's.
Right.
So.
The only thing is, uh, uh, by the way, you made a suggestion to the corner room for smaller meetings?
Uh, not so much the corner, but the entry over here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I suggested that to her and she like, her eyes opened up, she really liked that idea.
She did, but again, um, she said that to me as well, and I'm thinking, okay, Mary, but not everybody's gonna go to the corner room if it's a quiet enough being.
Right, the thing is, I think is our responsibility as a board.
Yeah.
To make sure, make, look at each entity which are gonna come before us initially. And uh, we'll determine, you're gonna be too noisy, you can't have that square dance up there like at, at six o'clock at night when they're doing their thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you're right though, it's, it has not, very little to do with the library.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure we keep uh, keep our lines clear there, so.
Okay, this was the uh, you got the operation, I had no problem with that. That was the operation hours.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. No, that's, I, we, our time, okay. Okay.
We're on the health trust, Mike?
Yes, I'm gonna give a moment for adjustment to take a moment, Ben.
Okay.
Want me to make a motion for a moment?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion for our say thirty one colon ninety five dash B to accept five hundred dollars from the health trust. For health supportive wellness campaign for the police department employees. And per the chief.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion, um, I'm, you know. I like the whole idea, they, they're like focused on eating well, increasing physical fitness, exercise, weight management, all that kind of, give cards, funding classes, membership. You know what they're using five hundred dollars for?
No.
Gym memberships for the entire staff. That just looks the wrong way, I, I don't know, I just don't, am I, am I just calling it, reading it the wrong way?
No, cause it's health trust, I, I, I actually think it's better than spending it on a meal myself. Because there is some benefit to that for the employees.
Yeah, I mean, no, but the wo- workplace campaigns, it's a workplace campaign focused on eating well, increasing physical fitness and exercise, weight management. Incentives may include gift cards, prizes, funding classes, or memberships or wellness related equipment, I guess they're looking at memberships.
Yeah.
I, I, I just feel like, uh, is that it?
A lot of insurance companies now include that in their thing, no matter where you go, uh.
They give you benefits.
My wife with her, she's under her current insurance from her employer, she kept it in retirement. She could go to fit, uh, Planet Fitness every year for a year, cause they allow that in the policy. Most insurances do that, and it's, it's more about keeping healthy.
Since it's not out of our, our wallet, you might say, I'd say let's approve it, okay?
I think a lot of departments do that.
Thank you.
Oh, the purchase policies.
Yep, we got it next. Okay, um, we amended the purchase policy last year, we don't have to make a motion on it, we all agreed on it, it was just retyped. Uh, the amounts are there, and the thing is, Dave, you already signed it, you're smart.
Yeah, I saw, we already approved it like you said.
Exactly, just the signature.
Actually mark that draft up a little bit too, Mike.
Did you, okay, that's good, but it was a draft, I thought we worked hard on that the other day, it was good. No, you did not.
Excuse me, for the benefit of the public that listens to the tape, could you review what the purchase policy?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is, just so people know.
It was, it was approved last week, it was discussed last week, and all we're doing is signing the document, just to let you know, uh, where, where the changes were made, it was in the, the amounts. Of the limitations of where we could, uh, how much we could spend the money, specifically for purchases less than or equal to seventy five hundred dollars. There, we're supposed to get a, uh, a telephone quotation maybe used for this uh, uh, document pricing. Between seventy five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, formal guaranteed bids from at least three sources must be obtained. Bids must be documented, uh, on the telephone quotation form, or may be supported by written documentation from vendors, the wording didn't change, just the amounts. And lastly, anything over twenty thousand dollars, i- it requires a formal sealed bid to be used for purchases. Invitation to be a bid must be posted on Dunbar website and bulletin board for at least fourteen days prior to the date of opening. Essentially, what we did, this was adopted in twenty fourteen, and after so, so many, about maybe, uh, so many years with that, that's almost nine years. We got the, the limitation, the for purchases, we up the uh, the amounts to make it facilitate other departments and, and our purchasing agents to make. To make purchases without being hamstrung by an order, no outdated policy.
And, and, and I, I agree.
No, no.
Point, there's a couple of people out there that brought that up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that at least this, if they hear what the discussion is.
Yes.
Can say, you know, that, cause you're still within the uh, the parameters of, of what people talked about.
Yeah, jazz. No, we had a, we had a great discussion on it last week, this, this, this is a formalization of the documents, so for the, for the public, it's just, uh, it's. Taking a twenty fourteen document and bringing it up to twenty twenty three.
You know, there's, I, I can think of two individuals that stand out in my mind that are usually here for. You know, there's, I, I can think of two individuals that stand out in my mind that are usually here for. Either the road bond, or one of them's here when he's just, has a major complaint. Those people are the ones that really brought it to the forefront at town meeting in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
So at least they know that this fits in the parameters of what they're talking about. There's, there's a, a policy that's used to make those.
Absolutely, and the thing is, the poli- the, the only thing we essentially changed were the, the bracketed amounts. The policy remains firm and, and, and exact, we didn't change a word on the policy, it was just the amounts. And we tried to, as I said, from, bring the prices from twenty fourteen into twenty twenty-three. Gentlemen, I'll say. Thank you, Bob.
There was a few things that Dave wanted to redress, and so I, I don't think we, we need to sign that today.
Yeah, it's basically eleven of fifteen.
Yeah.
Monitoring the upper town hall event coordination with library director and library schedule and adhere to and oversee the upper town hall. Usage guidelines, well, that one actually will stay in, cause that's under us.
Right. It's reiterated though, it doesn't, it's not their responsibility.
No, I don't think that was under Dean or us. Right, it's under ours, but it's like uh.
Yeah, it, it's uh. So. It was eleven?
Yeah, let's put the line under.
Eleven, and which was the second one?
The last one, I think.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Down at the bottom.
Yep. Oversee the upper town.
Already doing that under another whole page.
Right. They, they, they have nothing to do with the town.
Well, that's ours, that's under our, right, right, but they.
I know, but it's like them telling us what we're doing.
What we're doing, but has no, no, okay, agreed, so I got two arrows there. Those are problematic areas, we needed to be remo- recommended removing both of them, right, correct?
Yeah, or just that, those ones I underlined, you had to take Mary out of it.
So remove. And remove. Entire line, I'm gonna put the underlined.
It's just like when you let them develop the draft, they're telling us what to do on our own building. Make any sense.
They're the tenant.
Right, and he is here. Just plural, the tense, it's a more grammatical, maintaining or maintaining. It's just in, inaccurate now, you see what I'm saying?
You shouldn't even put uh Dunbart Public Laboratory responsibility as tenant.
I'm, I'm true, it's true.
Okay, um. The second floor use policy we have now. You should have copied, does everyone copy that? This is what we worked on last week. Do, do you wanna, do you wanna have a lean emailing to you? She did email this, by the way, the form. So I have, you have, you have a copy of it, you should have a copy of it.
Um I read through it, the only thing I didn't understand about her email is she said the highlighted and darkened areas will be taken off the form. And the highlighted areas, I think are the changes we just put on the form, so. It was kind of um, I was a little worried how she worded, I did have, I did make some notes on the one I read up. Let's just take a second and read it.
Absolutely. Thing is, I had a question on, why does a police officer have to be arranged on the reservation form?
I don't think it did, I, I think, let's go right down through these bullets, so let's read it, the library may use the. May use the space for overflow crowds with lectures and guest speakers are anticipated and for other libraries sponsoring teams. When the room is not reserved, I think is important to have in there.
Yep.
Alright, so. And I think the first line is good.
What uh above that, what about town boards, library and committees have first priority in use of the second floor meeting space? I don't think library should be in there, because if she has a scheduled event in there.
Oh yeah, it wasn't supposed to be library, town committees, town boards.
Should be town boards and town committees.
Yeah, it wasn't library, yeah.
Cause she can use the space if there's nothing else planned. Or she can reserve it.
Right, again, it's redundant, it's redundant, cause it's already like next bullet point anyway. So let's cross library off.
I just did, okay? Town committees, town boards and town committees.
Town boards and committees, just like it says.
Okay.
So during hours of operations, the library. Oh, right here is the part I fixed at home, it says during hours of the operational hour of the library. During, cross out hours of operational. During operational hours of the library. So cross out hours of the. So it says. During operational hours of the library. Only activities with no or low noise impact will be granted.
Slash, it should be a slash permit, it should be a slash in there.
Permitted, i.e. prohibited activities would include not limited to concerts, loud music, et cetera.
Yep.
Any exceptions to limitation are to be determined by the board of selectmen at a select meeting. Town organization may use the space for organizational meetings and for functions such as.
No, it's functions, period, such, such, yeah, such groups include.
But are not limited to Dunbart Historical Awareness, Dunbart Historical Society, American Legion, Dunbart Church Groups. Dunbart Guard Club Scout Groups, four H Fire Department, Library Book Groups. Dunbart School Events, Community Plays, Concerts, Rheticles.
Recitals.
Recitals, dances, et cetera, provided however that no one group can monopolize the space. Since there may be conflicts in scheduling cooperation, all parties will be expected. In the event of scheduling conflict between the town board and the community group, the town boards will use, will take precedence. If the organization wishes to make a contribution to Dunbart uh to the town. As a result of its room use, the donation would be much appreciated and the use. To defray utility and cleaning costs. Check should be made out to town of Dunbart with a note on the face of the check indicating town hall use.
Okay.
Which I think is a nice way to go about it.
Well, I don't like bacon.
Okay, reserving the second floor, applicants may sign up for usage of the second floor at town offices during regular business hours. At hours, I should say at least seven days.
At least, yep.
So put that in there. Seven days prior to the daily event. Drop-ins. Where short notice may be accommodated after the appropriate paperwork has been.
Filmed, filed and acknowledged.
Filed and acknowledged. At the town office during normal business hours, for events involving significant advanced planning, reservations may be made prior to ninety days. With the approval of the selectman at one of the regular scheduled meetings.
That's fine.
The town will provide an entry door key and a keypad code prior to the scheduled event. The applicant is responsible for opening and closing the building and being present at all of the functions at all times. The building must be locked when the group leaves, except during library hours. The physical key must be returned to the town offices on the same day or the next business day. Okay, policies regarding use of the second floor, attendance must not exceed occupancy of one fifty. Just so you guys remember, we, we decided to stick at one fifty to see how everything works out. Instead of going up to two hundred or two twenty-five. Any individual group or organization using the second floor will be held responsible for willful or accidental damage. To the premises caused by the group or organization, its members or those attending its program. All setup and cleanup, including chairs and tables, should be our responsibility, no, is the responsibility, right?
Yep.
The responsibility of the group using the space and should be accomplished within the reserved time, room time. Smoking is not permitted, alcohol consumption is not allowed except for with special permission from the board of selectmen. Groups are responsible for leaving the room in a neat and clean condition before leaving. No items may be taped, tacked, or otherwise affixed to the walls or floors. I wanna put more floors in there.
Doesn't matter like that. Justin? Prepare food now.
Do we need to put down hall or, or hallway?
No, I think just walls and floors says it.
Prepared food and beverages may be served, but it is responsibility of groups to leave the premises neat and clean. All trash encumbered by the group should be removed by the group as in a carry-in, carry-out policy. A minimum of one responsible adult over the age of eighteen must be accompany the group. Of people under the age, that should be seventeen, not sixteen, cause we.
Right, we're leaving seventeen's out.
Yeah.
You got that, Justin?
Yep.
Okay.
In advertising, any event banners and signage on the town common date prior approval from the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of that part.
Okay. Now, the, this is, she, the second op form is the re- the reservation form, and, and again, it's a draft, so I, I already have a few ideas I wanna just take out of there, but.
You wanna read the draft, Mike?
Yeah, and town meetings have preference over other events, required, requirements for the use of the Dunbart Town Hall second floor may be changed or waived by the vote. By vote of the board of selectmen. The selectmen also reserve, 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 not plural, reserve the right to refuse the town hall for cause. And to impose other such fees and restrictions as conditions may require. They grant, they damage a place, for example. Alright, you got group and committee name up top, then you've got a contact person, at least eighteen plus, their address, phone number and email. The date of the application, uh date, I'm, I think, date and time, what do you think?
Yeah, date and time, sure.
The application, yep. I just, I put date and time of application, reservation dates.
Wait, we don't care about the time of application, we care about the uh.
No, we do, because I, let's say.
Okay, in case two come along one day.
Two come along the same day.
Date and time.
And, and then we, someone comes in at ten o'clock, well, I think I was in here before you, then we get into a argument.
We also need reservation dates and times, because you might have a morning one and an afternoon.
Got you, got it. Got it, number two, great, nature event and approximate number of people involved, I think that's great. Now, the reservation time, that's kinda like goes with number two, you wanna move that up to number two?
No, I guess we could just leave it like she has it here, get rid of the timeline number two.
Okay, cause four is redundant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll leave number four there, just take it off the.
Will food and beverage be involved, number five, I like that, leave it the way it is. Number six, I think.
I think we should get rid of that whole line, because it's only gonna be when we approve it on a special occasion.
Oh, the alcohol?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, that's.
Number six, right.
Six and the police, the police board kinda related to the alcohol use, so I say we take that out completely.
Yeah, I think so too.
Good.
Town hall equipment required.
In other words, if they re- require the use of the AV, like AV system. They're gonna have to, they, they just can't go willy nilly, start pushing buttons, they're gonna have to receive a small class on how to use it. And arrange for that ahead of, before, that's why we need it more than seven days, so they can arrange with someone to get up there and learn how to use it, agreed?
Right, but I was thinking equipment like just table and chairs, and then I put a note over AV to be added as line number eight.
Okay.
So like, um why don't we put requiring, then let's put table. And chairs, okay, instead of yes and no. On that, and then add a number eight line.
Okay, well, the, the number's gonna change anyways.
Oh yeah, it would be a number.
Seven, yeah.
Seven, yeah.
It would be um, uh audio, audio. Audio visual requirements.
Yeah, will. Town. Video AV.
Yep.
The equipment they needed.
Well, it's with audio visual requirement, I have a yes or no.
Yeah. Make it simple.
Make it simple, yeah. Simple, simple, simple. Yeah, too many words, Dave.
Old town hall, video AV equipment they needed.
Again, the signature, the address, you got a contact person, then you ask him for his address up top, then you ask him for the address on the bottom, I said, kill the address sign again.
Where, oh, signature address, yeah.
Signature and date, that's all we need there.
Yep.
The thing is, this is something I, we've never discussed, equipment, event requires the event insurance. Um I asked Lena about that, through, you know, the, our insurance company, Primex?
Yep.
They can buy a one-day policy for any insurance thing.
But you know, we're also covered for those.
True, but the thing is, but let's say someone damages it a lot. And the, the whole mea culpa, we, we didn't mean to damage it's broken, well, maybe this year, we're gonna, this time we're gonna require you to buy an insurance policy. Cause we broke it up last time, you, you screwed up the toilets and the water was running for days.
I think what's important is that um everybody is coming to us the first time, so like, say they wanna do a benefit concert. And you know there's gonna be a large number of people.
Right.
We probably have to cross that bridge as we get to the.
You wanna leave it on there for now?
I don't know if we should leave it or just bring it up.
Well, some, some, the thing is, uh what is up?
We always revise this too.
Yeah, but, what is our policy?
I think if you put this down here, then it makes us more liable, take it right off the form.
Cause we already are insured, yes, Bob?
Why don't you just add may be required to have a, an insurance, the one-day insurance policy?
Right.
Depending on when they come to you and they tell you what the usage is. Then you would be able to say, hey, you know, you're gonna have to get that policy, only cause you may find it. They may be uh somehow, something could get broken.
We didn't lean check-in, but it wasn't required.
No, but it's opt, that's why she left it as optional, in other words, they're gonna come to us anyways.
That's what I'm saying.
We're gonna see the nature of the event, and we could just say, majority will be no.
You know, the select, the selectmen may require it if, you know, if the usage is gonna be an impact.
Right.
We'll just take this and put it up in the top paragraph and say, event, separate event. Insurance may be required, and then we'll make that decision when they come see us.
Okay, that's.
Right.
Just put it up in the top.
In the paragraph?
Yeah, just so it's as a caveat to everybody, and we have to sign all these. The first time, so we can make that decision and talk about it and discuss it.
Because you know, and, and here's, here's an issue too now, but Dave is covered under us, right? We have five claims that comes in on, on our, uh out of our insurance policy, where, where do you think our rates are gonna go? If it's covered by, if they're, if they're buying the insurance, they're, they own the insurance policy, doesn't affect our, shouldn't affect our insurance policy. But insurance policies are, as you, if, if you had a car accident, it was your fault, you know the insurance guy, company gonna get everything that you, they paid out to you and then some. Am I right, Leo?
Your rates go up.
Exactly.
Or they get rid of you.
Okay, I, I think we beat this to death. Back to Lena for some more action.
And we're gonna wait till next meeting to approve it?
Yeah, just about there. Just about there, okay. Next item. Okay, we got uh hazard medication plan, we have, it, it's been uh basically drafted for us, for our signature. This is funded by the uh building planning department and the, the hazard mitigation committee.
I've signed it.
You've signed it already, Dave, very good.
Oh, finally, things shut off, huh? But was it cleaning itself?
Justin, do you understand why we have to do this?
No.
Okay, uh just quickly for the benefit of the public, let's say we have a natural disaster here. And um let's say town halls go down, it's a hurricane, it just takes on half the town. And all the town, all, all the buildings are gone, in order for us to receive FEMA money, we have to have a hazard medication plan in place. And that's the uh. It's uh something expires after so many years, has to be updated, and that's, we're just basically updating, essentially updating it now. You're assigned a David, it's good? Okay, we got a, a notification from the. Guard Club, they uh, there's an email, they wanna volunteer the labor to the uh town common. They, uh this year they've author, uh lean authorized standard ten yards, amount should be delivered Friday, April twenty-first. For their scheduled gathering on the twenty-second. That attached email is one of the requests with the uh, the question of new area to mulch, with board consensus, the garden club will include this area in the annual verification. Alright, what area they're talking about? Okay, is it okay to put mulch on the east side of the new entrance where the dirt is right now, I believe that will help with keeping the dirt from splashing when they, when incoming weather. Or is a que- or is a question for the segment tomorrow? We were thinking of using a rock, stone, piece of.
We're gonna use that same stone they have, and we're gonna go around the old building right back for the drip.
With, with, with a, with a.
Where it's bouncing up on the building already, I'd like to use the stone, cause mulch will bounce on the building.
Same way.
Yep.
Um with fabric, just keep it meaty.
So they're doing that next week?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, not gonna have enough time to do the stone first?
That's fine.
That's fine. Get some bids on the stone. Um, actually, the, uh... Chacoine, I was gonna go through this later, but Chacoine has called Brian for you to do the plantings that are required by them as part of the project to finish up, and to do the, um, hydro seeding.
Okay.
Uh, so they gotta rake the loom again, hydro seed it all, and, um...
There was a little question that we had also, not only the stone we had, but put a little more loom around the, uh, the parking lot, because it was a, there was like a big cutoff there, do we wanna consider that?
Just should we consider that before the, then he s- he s- sprays it? Just 'cause we talked about evening, uh, not evening it out, but just fanning out a little more, just so that...
When they hydro seed it, they can hydro seed it all.
Yep.
How do you wanna handle that? We have a handyman, but I guess a lot of work for one guy to do.
Oh, handyman won't do that.
No.
That's a couple loads.
Do you wanna submit a bid to us to spread it with your skids there?
Yeah, I can.
You need more than a couple, but it's, it's conflict.
We'll have to get a, yeah, we'll have to get a couple of plates on.
Why don't you work on that?
What area it is and what size, and we'll just submit it to a few people.
I would say we're gonna have to figure, just to make it so they're all being the same thing, three loads alone to do the corner.
Three yards.
No.
Loads, how much is a load? You got the eighteen yards, eighteen yards, okay.
Three, try to round the corner out nicely, so you're not coming down.
Right now, when you walk out of the lot, it comes hard down to the grass, and we're trying to ease it down, so when older people are walking there, they're not... So like on old home day, you're not like tripping it, tripping down. But it's not, you know, it doesn't do something.
Quite a bit, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there something you could put down as a base before you, because that goes down quite a bit, right there in the corner, maybe not all alone, but...
Yeah, we could do so, a load.
Could do one load of sand and three loads of loom.
Sand and then...
Yeah, some, something, you know, clay, sand, whatever, and your own.
Figure from one load of the clay or slash sand, and then two loads of loom.
Yeah, that would save a little bit of money, you know?
Yeah, exactly, okay, we'll take a better look at it, we've looked at it briefly, I mentioned it last week, and have, have we even walked up? Get some bids on it.
And then, uh, do a second, separate number for stone, the same river stone they used on that building, to go around the whole building.
About three feet, two feet, two and a half?
Well, they've already done the majority of this side, but I wanna do, like, the new door, it's rounded there, I wanna do each side of that, because the drippings now are bouncing all up by the entryway.
Yep.
Take a look at it.
Okay, you got that, Justin?
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing is, you...
I'll talk with Lee when she's back.
We, we, yeah, sure, yeah, we gotta get, um, competitive quotes, so just keep that on.
And I got, um, you know, when the eight, uh, what do you call it, not the ERV, but the, uh, Mitsubishi, the, you could go the outside?
The HVAC system.
The stone is not quite out far enough from that, I'd like to come over maybe another, almost a foot, and come up to the corner of the building with that, and then come over. And then come across the old new front, this is not across the new front either, is it? Mm, it's not, not where they're gonna put the plantings, so I'd like to do all where the plantings are in that stone. Oh, they're gonna do all the stone there? Not the whole area, because there's still a good corner that's gonna be loomed there, but, uh... At least a couple of feet, just to...
Yeah.
Yes. Let some splash back. Yeah. Okay, and the other thing, I think when it goes to the left from that HVAC unit two, it's not quite out enough.
I just wanna hold off, I wanna have to hold off on, uh, defer.
Well, they could do it so it's done for that, um, thing of hers, but just the areas that existing, like now, that...
Okay, defer.
Nothing around the edge of the building.
For any, for any, uh, edge of building.
Maybe, I think Tom coordinates that, because Tommy doesn't, you know, with the garden club?
I know her.
I don't know.
No, nor Mark.
Yeah, you have all new people all the time, so...
If you want, Mike, I put on there for them to contact me and put my cell number on there, and then I'll walk them through, so they're not...
Yeah, just so they don't...
Maybe, maybe you need to mark it out with a spray paint?
I can have a spray paint.
Lay it out with a spray paint?
Yeah.
You know, and then they'll know what you're doing, then, and you'll know what you're doing.
Because they still have plenty of marks they have to go ahead and do, you know? All the gardens out front, and all the seats right by the seats can all be done.
Yeah, and all around the, all around the, the bandstand.
Yeah.
All that stuff, yeah. But I mean, if you have a paint, and paint where you wanna put the stones, you know, you, you'll be able to see right away what you're doing.
Yeah.
I can paint, I can paint, I have paint, but I haven't my truck, okay.
I'll tell you, no. I'll give you a flash, I...
Um, do you see the light on?
Upstairs? The, the one of the entryways on.
Um, they replaced the...
Yes, they saw it in the hallway.
How about the flag, they replaced that wire today too?
For the flag?
They said that's on a timer, but it was locked.
Can't fill.
The timer was locked on the light, so they said we might have to adjust the hours on it.
Just call Bill and see.
Alright, I'll order the work, order the work.
Put him in charge of that, yeah.
Alright, garden club's done, mailbox items now, alright, um, number, we had an email from, uh, the cleaners, they noticed some dust in there, it's been addressed, it's, they've been doing a good job, as I said earlier. One, uh, one of, item number two, do you see, do you see, we have an email from...
That's not allowed. You have to call and tell the employee that tomorrow.
I know, that's okay, I have no problem with doing that, okay? Would you agree, remembering the number two?
Yep.
David, wanna read that?
Number three is...
I'm not discuss, I'm not discuss, it has to do with some privacy information, so I'm not discussing the items for the public.
Number three has already been discussed.
Yep.
Brought up that the, the women at the, going to the library would like a changing table in one of the new bathrooms, but it doesn't, uh, support it this time. It's gotta have the handicap turns and everything mounted on the wall for them to work in there, so...
Okay, here's something, um, I'd like to do, um, we were gonna hold off, there's, I have to recognize...
Substitution.
Yes, I recognize some, like, Benoff for getting great prices, and for the little bit of money we can expend, I think that staircase we finished.
Yeah.
And gentlemen, do you, are you...
Well, second emotion, it was twelve seventy-five, I think we should do it now.
I think we should do it. Okay, alright, it's been approved, okay, all in fa, all in favor, I'm sorry, yes?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, GMC, quote, for GMC fixed gutter damage, where is this gutter damage?
Oh, that was at the transfer station. So, Mike, I broke it down, because it looked expensive to me, but after breaking it down, um, he's replacing a, a board and all the PVC on the face, and then the gutter parts.
Okay.
And with material and labor, it looked reasonable to me, but we'll maybe make a...
Sure, sure, it looks, okay, that's good.
This is for, um, replacement of gutter and PVC trim, and the board that rotted out behind the PVC at the transfer station building. The supplies and caulking and material were five sixty-two forty-five, and, um, the labor to remove the piece of gutter, remove the fascia, the PVC, and replace all of those items was nine hundred. It was fourteen sixty-two forty-five, and that was by our standard, uh, Greg Miller. So I make a motion that we approve that at that...
All second of the month? All in favor?
Aye. When you look at it face value, you could get gutters done much cheaper, but it's not all the labor for all the boards behind it, you know?
Anything, you see the price of, uh, Isaac type material now?
I do.
There was a whole bunch of it in the town, in the town hall.
There's some leftover Isaac material.
Not anymore, that was prime figure joint.
Okay, alright, um, we have a, a notice of decision from the planning board approving a two-lot subdivision, uh, Justin, you wanna talk about this?
Uh, I wasn't pressing that time meeting.
Okay.
That was the most recent meeting.
Alright, then I, I'll take it for you, if you don't mind?
Yep.
It's, uh, regularly scheduled to be in the Dunbar Planning Board on Wednesday, April fifth, the following decision was rendered by majority vote, approval of a two-lot subdivision for Wayne Mills, tax lot, uh, box lot three, zero one zero four, located on Stark Highway North. Um, they put some conditions on there, which I'm not gonna go through, it's more of a notification, and it was just a courtesy notification. Dave, do you have any, any questions on that? No action needed here, it was just a notification. Let's go for Donna.
Next one is a letter we made last week, uh, for Alan Byer and the electrician.
Right. We had a, uh, just for the public know, that we have another, um, uh, a donation from a electrician who essentially donated his labor for installation of some equipment, and I appreciate that, and so... We sent him, sent him a solemn, all thank you note.
Yeah, he'll be able to pray his taxes with it.
Hopefully, yes.
I did call Alan today, Donna and the building inspector, um, had spoken to me earlier last week about having him pull a building permit. Um, just they know everybody that worked on the second floor, so I did ask them to come in and pull a no-cost building permit.
Right, and then, we gotta be very, uh, very, uh, aware of that, that with some, building permits are still required, uh, for working on town properties. If it's required of a resident, we require, for the same type of work, we require of our contractors, it doesn't cost anything, but it just allows the building inspector to go back and be a second set of eyes, if he, if he needs to be.
Now, I did talk with Donna and Brian about that, the building inspector, um, they were looking for affidavits from the, um, electrician, and I talked to him, he said he would be happy to provide one.
Okay.
Um, he did pull a permit, he did get his rough inspection before Mike left, um, so he does remember that, and he got another inspection along the way. The final is gonna be tomorrow, when we do the walkthrough with the architect, and, um, he said he has no problem providing an affidavit for them.
Okay.
Stating that everything was done to code.
Good, we'll, we'll get that on the, in the building, in the building department.
Yeah, I'm also gonna give them a copy Lean has from Trexler's, um, structural approvals for the building.
Yes, yes. Alright, um, we have surplus property state auction coming up. Are we gonna be in a total police vehicle over there?
No, I think we're good there.
Okay, um, I don't think we have anything there.
Just gonna say, I don't think we have anything.
I don't think so either, yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, Town and Dunbar records indicate the last permutation between Dunbar and Ware was completed January fifteenth, two thousand eight.
Preambulation.
Preambulation, yeah, um, it's gonna be done every seven years for our New Hampshire RSA, and the Dunbar has appointed Fred Mullin as the representative of Dunbar to do this activity. Okay, it's just, uh, it's a letter from us to Ware, asking for a copy of it, to make sure they get it done, which is, we're taking initiative here, Dunbar's signature.
Yeah, some Fred, Fred always is, too.
Okay, then we have a resident complaining, I'll leave the names off, I'll, I'll read it, Dave, if you don't mind, just, I'll read it. Few weeks ago was mentioned that the outside lights on the new library issue were on all night, these, and were extremely bright, we have been assured at public meetings prior to construction, the light, the outside lighting was not gonna impact our home or school street in general, in a negative way, and the lights will be on a timer that will turn off at a reasonable time, ten PM or thereabouts. The lights were subsequently shut off until a solution could be found, last night, the lights were on again all night, we do have shade, so the glare is so bright, shines right through them, we were told that now a desk and it'd be a desk to dump timer, this is not at all what we assured would happen, we find it highly, highly unacceptable. Not only does it destroy the rural feel of our town center, it blinds us when we choose to sit outside on our porch in the evening, which we enjoy, often during warm, warm weather. We feel there is absolutely no valid reason to have lights on all night long, the Dunbar is not a city of high crime. Please, we maybe discuss a reasonable solution to this problem, if it cannot be resolved beforehand, we'd like to discuss it the next selectmen meeting in April.
I can speak to it.
Yeah, you, you walked us through it last time, and I think as I saw the lights, and I'm looking at it right now, um...
I did, um, I did, uh, walk the neighbor through it as well, and that may be what prompted them to send a letter, but, um... I brought it up to the electrician, that the neighbors directly across, uh, the street from the entry did not like the glare of the light, and it is pretty bright when the building is white, it does amplify it, I'm not gonna say it doesn't, and, um, we checked out many options, uh, one of which, I tried to reduce the bulbs. Um, you cannot reduce the bulbs that are in the fixtures that the architect specified on them, um, we checked putting a timer in, the circuitry that's in the ceiling, um, between the first and second floor is where those lights are wired, and those lights are not the only power source that's on there. So he said we could not put a timer, if they did put a timer, it would have been in the ceiling, so when you do, uh, fall back, spring ahead, time, you'd have to crawl up in the, remove the ceiling, adjust the timer up in the ceiling and come down, so it was not very conducive, but not only that, he, he said it runs lights, it powers lights that are inside the building as well. So, and looking at all of that, um, there was no other way to do it, that light comes on, the two lights, and they are, the light bulbs are up in the fixture probably two or three inches, they do shine straight down.
Shine straight down, there's nothing pointing at their house at all.
And the same thing, there's a, there's a light cover on the one that's above the basement door that shines straight down, um, the building is white, the other night, when I went through, this building is all lit up, the same way, and we've got a, a light out in front of this building, I mean, it's, it's town property and has to be lit. I was thinking about the timer part of it too, and say you have the timer shut off at nine o'clock, let's say in a meeting ran until ten, you can't let people come out of a building without lighting on.
Right.
Um, so that's the type of lighting that the architect had picked, I brought it up to the architect, and everything the architect suggested, we had already tried with the electrician, so I think we've done our due diligence, at least trying to adjust the building to their needs, but it's just, uh, not available at this time unless we start, uh, ripping it all apart.
How about, how about painting the wall a different color?
I, I like that.
What accent color?
Can you get them thicker shades?
Well, it doesn't shine, if you, I'm looking right now at it, that, that's the light they're talking about, it goes straight down, it's not like a neighbor's light, which is on the outside, like a sconce on the outside, like a flood, like a floodlight, and points straight down, to me, um, last, uh, two weeks ago, I went by, uh, when, uh, Suckman Knoll pointed out to me that it was potentially a problem, it's on all night, but we, we walked over there, and it was essentially, there was no, it's black anywhere outside of the library area.
But Dave hit the nail on the head, it's the reflection from the white sides, and they're not used to seeing that brightness out there.
Right, right.
So, I mean, uh, that's why I suggested thicker shades, uh, while I was kidding, that's the only thing that would do anything.
They did tell me, the husband told me, that they were in the midst of buying the thicker shades, the, uh...
Well, a light, I mean, not a light filtering a light.
But I wanted to let them know that I did try, you know, it's three or four different options, and the, the, uh, electrician said, Dave, I have no options for you, last week, changed fixtures, he said, because...
But the selection of fixtures are just, it's most appropriate ones to do.
And I do know motion sensors, um, work, but I've had different ones on my houses and barns, and I can tell you, they don't work consistently for a long period of time.
Yeah, right.
So we'd be doing something different if we put a motion sensor on it, because it seems like they hold up for a year, sometimes two, and then year.
Sometimes the power outages affect them too, see, so, you know, so...
I, I would say, if they have the town minister invite them in, then they can chat with them next week.
Yeah.
In the next meeting.
They are aware of everything I've just told you, because I didn't, um, didn't tell them.
Well, if they still wanted, if they wanna come in, it's fine.
Yeah.
Justin, did you see? Point taken, okay. Alright, I'm open, public comment. Public comment, back row, Bob, anything?
I'm all set.
You're all set, okay, let's bring back to the board, uh, I hope we start with Dave, give me an update on the, uh, okay, the most important thing we have here.
We have an approval for our use of our elevator.
Wow.
And it, even though it's called a Lulu, it is an elevator inspected by the state.
Are you gonna back that up on the wall up there?
We did, we have to, like, hope, by the way, so this is a temporary one, the permanent one will come, um, in the mail to us, and this temporary one, I've already had Joe Marie laminate it, and put a copy, the original has to be within that building, it can't be within this building, so I gave the original copy to Mary to keep in that building, somewhere it's in a safe spot, so all of her employees will know where it is. And I told her, I said, you know, that isn't open as many hours as this building, do we wanna keep it here, and he said, no, the original has to be in the building there, but he didn't want us to use the original, because somebody could tear it up, so I'm like, okay.
So we make a copy, put it up?
So I made a copy and I laminated.
Okay.
The reason I put this on here is so when Lean keeps this, um, Richard was the installer, um, from this company for the elevator, will always have him, this was the state inspector, every elevator needs to be inspected once a year, this company can do it, or the state can do it, and... And I think we can just contract the state, um, it's like a hundred dollars a year, or whatever you call it, inspect them.
Right.
So that's why I added those cards to the bottom of that for Lean, if we could just put it back in the package.
I think it'd be great.
Uh, so, our elevator's up and running, that being said. Um, everything but some small items, and I'm talking just touching up of paint and caulking. Are done within the insider building. Um, Chicoine has called the guy that is gonna do the, as I spoke about earlier, the landscaping. To match the print with just a couple of the shrubs that show on the plan, and, um, they're also gonna hide their scene. So, um, I would imagine that would be done the next week or two, depending on when you get the guy scheduled. Um, there's an exterior painting that still needs to be done where the power was taken off the building.
Right, right, right.
And that has been scheduled, I don't know exactly when, but Chicoine told me come as soon as he possibly can.
Okay.
May even be done this weekend. So, we have, that being said, we have a walkthrough with the architect tomorrow for a substantial completion report from them.
Okay.
And in that, I'll make sure they denote the small items that need to be done.
The remaining items, yeah.
Um, Chicoine from their final bill pulled off the twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars for the landscaping. And whatever amount they affix to the items that aren't done, I'll have them deduct that from the final payment as well.
Okay.
And they'll send that into Lean for the.
Now, you wanna make that, you wanna work for the library, do you, you wanna have that at opening day for, have the segment there too?
Um, I don't mind if we're there, I, I want, if I'm not up north, I plan on going.
Okay, why don't we, uh, Justin, is that alright with you?
Yep.
Why don't we just tell them, it's gonna be a ribbon cutting.
Well.
You wanna do a ribbon cutting?
I didn't wanna do a ribbon cutting, only because I'm not a hundred percent, unless we check our schedules and we're sure we're gonna be there. But, um, I'd like all the landscaping for sure done and everything before we do our ribbon cutting.
Yeah, I just don't wanna be redundant, you know what I'm saying?
I know.
Because this is open to public, and basically the public can go there and get tours, it's not kinda like taking the thunder away from this.
I know, when we do ours, I'd like to put on our website and everything else on the police's website, and, you know, try and get a real good showing to it, I don't know, if you guys wanna do that.
Justin, your thoughts?
I just wish she came to us before she scheduled everything.
Well, the thing is, uh, we could, uh, one thing I'm serious, and could we tag along with that and make it just a one, a one event?
I mean, it is a full, it's a full, two weeks away.
Yeah, two weeks away, so this, we can catch up a lot of stuff.
We meet the Thursday before it happens.
Yeah, and it's gonna be from, uh, ten, ten to two, and you don't stay the entire time.
And I think most all the other items will be done, so.
Just starts making that landscape up.
Right.
That, that may be done too.
Yeah, just don't know.
The, um, ERV upstairs is up and operational, they came in and powered that up this week.
Which cool, by the way, too.
Huh?
It's cool, still.
Cool, then heats, up to seventy, they set the temp at seventy. So, potentially, without exchanging the air next year, I'm not foreseeing us needing any heat source there, but I'm still checking into that avenue.
Yeah, I really think seventy's too high right now.
I do, but they, that's what they set it for, so we'll see how it works out next winter.
Did you ever look into the brands and stuff that were passed around this?
Not really.
Um, Donna had said they weren't before that, right?
Thought there was one that we thought maybe we could look into, you were gonna look into more about that.
I thought that's the one she said that wasn't for.
No, she sent two, one, she definitely said it wasn't, and the second one that was sent out.
Why don't you send it to me if you have it?
Okay. Copy, copy, copy me to it, yeah.
Okay, so just to finish up the updates, the electrician was by today. He, um, reconnected the power that went underneath the walkway that was hit by the excavation guide. Cause they put a sleeve.
Remember that?
So that was done, um, he shut off the heater that was in the downstairs, not shut off, but lowered the temperature, so it didn't run all the time. He put the alarms back upstairs in the hall for us and checked out the alarm market.
The thing is, Pro Technologies is supposed to also check out, um, fire alarms again, they, they're old.
They, they never come to respond at all.
We need to, no, we need to, uh, address that, I haven't, make sure, uh, uh, Lean, I just wanna make sure Lean gets, I wanna put a note here.
Yeah, Pro Technologies to check out those, they haven't been by.
Because remember we said it's ten, it's ten years old, they're all overdue.
One thing I will say, when the guys came from, um, Brookside Mechanical.
Yeah.
They took the ladder out of the storage closet.
Right, the wood one?
Brand new floor, they hadn't finished the floors yet upstairs, they were still sanding, which is perfect. They dragged the ladder right across the stage to the old, my little kid. I went up there, I says, who moved this ladder? He said, I did. I said, did you see the stage was just finished? He says, yeah, I didn't, I didn't bother it, I said, there's a big arc right over the ladder, he says. I don't think I did it, I said, you're the only one that moved the ladder since the down floor was done. So anyway, I got him down there to look at it, I said. We just spent all kinds of money to do this, and I said, you scratch it, you didn't even think about it, two of you guys are here, you could have carried it. They use an eye ladder to boot, so.
That was the production guys, for the A V.
For, yeah, the Brookside Mechanical for the ERV.
Yeah.
So I took him, I brought him the cardboard roll up, which was in the same room that I had to protect the floors, made him put it underneath the ladder. And I said, when you guys put it away, be careful, because the guy was there finishing the floor, I asked him to touch it up, and he did. You can still see it's minor, but they touched up for us, willing with it, for no charge.
But, oh, we're gonna foam some more, another bone with it, with its staircase.
Yeah, um. I got a note from the Casanos today, they wanna bring the chairs back Saturday, they've been cleaned up and, um. I'm not sure if they're oiled up, but anyway, they're cleaned up and dressed up and.
Okay.
Refurbished, they're gonna bring them back, and they already bought the pads for the bottom level.
Oh, for the feet?
I left him an email, the chairs that are, um, have broken slats and stuff, instead of hauling them back upstairs. We'll put them in the container, and maybe we'll take a look at having some of them refurbished by a local craftsman.
We need to repair parts, if we have a pair of other chairs, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's something.
Isn't there something here that we should have?
There's one or two here.
Yeah.
These triple chairs, there's, um, eighteen pairs of triples. There's, um, there's doubles up there, there are, uh. I wanna say there's twenty-four double chairs, that's fifteen, fifteen, and a hundred, and then there's another. Probably twenty-four triple chairs that aren't usable, there's a slap missing here or there, that could be refurbished.
Yeah, so easy, that's easy, almost a hundred people.
Um, and then the single chairs, there's twenty-four, so there's a hundred and twenty-five seats.
To me, that's, that's a good start.
Two, two of those chairs there without even refurbishing anything, so, but I thought if we, if we got a craftsman that really was interested in doing it at a regional.
Just do that in the way towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
I would do roofs first, roofs first?
Yep.
Okay.
So I think that's it, the, uh, I, I wanna ask the board, um, I haven't given the library the green light yet to move the cart over. But if the walkthrough goes good with the architects tomorrow, I think we should give them the green light.
For the, the library drop box?
Move the drop box, I've already shown Mary the area to put it in.
I know, that's no issue.
And I think she's talking about doing her, um, opening up of, uh, software, well, an opening Tuesday.
Okay, so it'll be open for business inside.
Yeah, Mary did buy something that she thought would help, um, with the library kids coming in. Um, she brought one of them, she has a red one and a black one.
It's a, it's a, it's a, uh, yeah, it's like a stanchion with a little rope, velveteen rope, no, no stanchion, but it's, it's.
Just the rope of the stanchion, and it's gold colors, it looks nice, something like you'd use at a movie theater or something. And, um, it hangs from the, the handrail on the stairs to the handrail coming down, and it kinda would block anybody from going upstairs. You know, isn't supposed to go up there, I think, until we.
Open up.
Open up our end of it.
She shared that with me, it's a very good idea by.
She wanted to put one in front of the elevator, and I told her, I said, you know, the elevator, it's open for use. But I did ride the elevator three times today, and it goes so slow, you're not gonna wanna keep riding it.
The crank goes faster with a littler guidance.
I know. I was testing it.
Anything else, Dave?
Um, you know, I think if we give her her opening, um, once we sign our request, I think we're room is ready to be used.
Right, I'm looking at, that's twenty-ninth, May first?
Or, or, if we signed it our next meeting, I don't care if it's.
Well, the next meeting's gonna be that one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so I'm looking at May first.
So they could start booking them if they wanted to, I'd say, after, after we sign that.
Right, and next, I think maybe next week, next, two weeks from now, we do a final walkthrough.
Yep.
Final walkthrough next time, you wanna do it six-thirty?
Yeah, I'd say that's fine, I mean.
Six-thirty, Leo, if you wanna, uh, two weeks from now, we'll be meeting at six-thirty for a walkthrough, final walkthrough.
Unless you just wanna do it on your own as you're going by?
We can do both, but things, I, it's good to have, uh, different points of view, because you know some nuances, and if you see any nuances, we can share them on Monday. So six-thirty, two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Where are your slipper socks?
Slipper socks, yeah, your booties are out there. Oh, jeez, okay, Justin to you, oh, Dave, anything else?
Nope.
Dave, Justin to you, please.
Uh, just, I was reviewing the personnel policy, and I just thought that we need to look, take a look at that, ever since we changed the wage step scale last year. We changed it from, uh, the three step to.
With the multiple steps.
Yeah, to multiple steps, so we gotta adjust that policy in regards to that.
And we should look at our COVID policy again too, huh?
Right, COVID policy, and there's also another thing I, I'd like to bring up, the thing is, our part timers get, um, minimal benefits. One thing I'd like to consider, uh, if they're a part timer, I'm not feeling good today, I'm gonna stay home, they get to stay home. And they don't get any pay, I like to consider maybe one to two personal days, or they get earned during the year, based upon number of hours, personal days, so they can take off. Uh, and for sick leave or whatever, because if they're sick, they get nothing. Just, just a thought, I don't wanna make any decisions, just.
I don't think about that.
And, uh, but it's very common in, in the state, and very common in many other municipalities, we, uh, the thing is, we're the outlier rather than the.
I was gonna try and go one year without giving.
Okay, but we're, we are the outlier compared to other municipalities, and so I just wanna at least think about that for our part timers.
I don't give my full timers sick days.
Well, the thing is, uh. What kind of party are you running? Okay, enough said.
A lot of industries don't do that.
I'm sorry?
A lot of industries don't give.
A lot of construction fields don't.
No way.
We don't give out sick days.
Nothing, zero.
Yeah, even for a full time, you're, so, only vacation time that you can iron.
But they don't get it, yeah.
Did you hear from anybody about it, or?
Uh, I was just looking at the COVID policy, like someone who's got COVID, let's say a part timer's got COVID, we pay.
Yeah, we were reasonable with COVID.
Right, right, and the thing is, so, I'm saying, so you went home sick with COVID, and you had to show documentation that you had positive test, we would pay you your salary.
Yeah, we did that for full and part timers.
Right, right, the part timers were really, we added part timers to that, but we're gonna be revisiting that again and.
I will say, knock on wood, nobody abused it either.
No.
I can see.
It's kinda hard to when you gotta be tested.
Nobody, nobody even came in to really ask for it.
Ask for it, yeah, well, we took care of it, the transfer station employees who they had, but I don't think it was hardly any.
Yeah, I know.
Rest of you stayed home before I was.
Yeah, but don't forget, we were getting money from the feds.
True, true.
Okay, so, it wasn't our money, it was their money, so.
It's all our money.
But, but you understand?
Yes, no, it was, it was actually, yeah.
I think, I think Justin's correct what he said, a lot of places do not do that.
Right, but the thing is, we pay our employees, uh, I think, um, a pittance as it is compared to private industry too. So, whatever, we can discuss it, we can discuss.
I think there's a, I think there's different benefits to every industry.
Exactly.
But I, I just, even for a part timer, I don't feel like that, that's the going standard to give a sick days, but.
Maybe you should discuss it after the next tax bill.
The thing is, you know, just on the tax bill, are you, are you deficient?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Uh, just about the roofs, I know we gotta touch base about that, now, uh, the budget's passed, we should get on the horn to people about bids for this roof.
Right.
And then, uh, the fire station, police station.
And, and, and the, uh, town garage.
The town garage, I think it's just a repair at this point.
Yeah, I think, um, let's start with this roof, because it's so straight, square, straightforward. And then when they're working on here, maybe they can bring them down as they do the bids to the garage for a bid.
Okay.
But that's kind of a separate group of, uh, people there.
It's gonna be some engineering.
RFP's gonna be quite a bit more extensive, I'd like to finish that up first and then work on that.
Do you know how to do those RFVs, do you wanna do that?
You just, you have, you have to have specifications that you want, okay.
I've done a bunch of Lean before.
And then, uh, the only other thing is the fuel tank at the town garage, we need to, uh.
I wanna give that to Jeff, to get him going on this, because the weather, the weather's nicer now, and, and snow's gone, we should start moving out on that.
Yeah, at least have him start looking into it, because he's gonna start redoing the roads soon, I'm sure too, so.
Okay, so, uh, roofs, bids, you're, I'm with you on the roofs, the fuel, I wanna, we, it's been approved, will you opt out budget to make that appear, let's make it, let's make it.
Like a note for, uh, Joe Marie, I noticed when I was reading our last month, last week's meeting. Um, barrels, Denver got purchased for the second, you know, the two, uh, utility drive barrels.
Gotcha, we need those sooner than later.
I would say, yeah, if we get Joe Marie on that.
Wait, how, how, how big a guy, you want it with wheels or?
The big gray thirty-five gallon with the.
With wheels.
The trundle wheels there.
With a cover on it?
Yeah. Put a hole in one cover for recycling and do the other one regular.
Yeah, okay, Justin, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, um. What's my trade, oh, um.
Oh, before I forget, Mike, because I'll forget again, downstairs, there are two doors, the fire doors we put, one was for the, um, sprinkler system.
Right.
And the other one was the control room for the elevator.
Understood.
I need to get lettering for those, um.
Stencil?
Um, yeah, I think the black stick-on letters, the doors should be labeled down there.
Okay, what's, what's behind the door?
Sprinkler room, if you wanna write that down for Joe Marie to get, you know, I'm thinking the three by four.
Something like, like a, like a main tape?
You could get one of those, or I was just thinking the stick-on ones, like you get at the hardware store, but.
Sprinkler room is one of them, and the other one's.
The other one is, uh, elevator machine room. He said the state inspector didn't pick up on it, but he said most of them are labeled.
Okay.
I forgot that on my stuff.
So two things for Joe Marie, alright, um, I'm gonna, Leo, uh, tax rate, we, we talked about tax rate, and it is definitely going up, but. One thing that I was pleasantly surprised this past year, people don't realize that, uh, last year, our tax rate was, uh, lowered significantly by the D R A. Because the women meals tax, they really delivered to the town of Dunbar, we got over two hundred K.
Yeah.
At the year end, which we didn't plan on, and lowered the tax rate last year, I'm cautiously optimistic that, um, if they don't spend it on other stuff and conquer it, that. The ta, women tax would come back to us again, and we can be.
Right, but it won't, it won't drop it enough that you, they'll notice their tax bills.
No, I know, but it, it is going up.
And I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at you guys, but, you know, it's all one number.
Oh, I understood, understood.
So, you know, you can, excuse me, but you can piss some money away on things, or you're supposed to be watching out for the tax payer also.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I'm trying to tell you.
Absolutely, but the thing is, gotta realize that, uh, uh, the majority of the increase this year, uh, well.
It's all one bill.
All one bill, but again, uh, we, we, I think we do, these two gentlemen.
I just said, I don't, I'm not pointing fingers at you guys.
Yes, I know, but I'm gonna give kudos to these two gentlemen, who work diligently hard to, uh, keep things in check.
And I, I get that. Thinking about that.
Go ahead, finish up.
I haven't seen a paid agree for my check, make sure Lean looks for the, uh.
You haven't seen your check?
No, in the, in the group of stuff we were signing, there was one for you and for you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Who let him a note, exemplify this, a five-four percent, I'm not. No, but I was really bringing up is, uh. After the electrician left today, which I didn't ask him to do this in advance, so, um, I wanna bring up to you guys, the library is very concerned, as you know, and we've talked about this before. When we're using the second floor, they don't want people overloading their, um.
Sound.
No.
Oh.
The, uh, internet connection for Wi-Fi.
Right, right, but I thought we were gonna have a separate line.
Yes, they wanted their own, us to have our own separate Wi-Fi, so, and we do have to, if we ever do put the little Lulu in for the stage, we need it for that anyway. Also, um. Lean bought the little hub to.
Right, I remember that, right.
So it'd be nice to have one, I asked him, I asked the electrician today if he could run one from basically down below Mary's room, straight up by the, um, chimney.
Right, cause of Casa Coa.
And just come up by the panel and put a coil there and mount one, so we can put whatever we want into it, out when the time comes.
Up top, I mean.
So like, we have meetings up there, and people want Wi-Fi, we can say, okay, town hall Wi-Fi password.
Right.
And they're not using Mary's, and it's not overlapping, and we have our own separate line, and nobody can.
You know, um, between me and you, the thing is, uh. When you have, it doesn't slow down significantly.
It doesn't hurt anything, but that's on the fear in their mind.
Oh, my God, it's, 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 it's over, it's overblown, I think, in my opinion, for the amount of users up there, I mean, I, if you come, look at my household, how many, how many things I have in my house. It's, it's, like, every TV, every music, I mean, I'm outside listening to music outside, it's all by internet. I, I, I mean.
But, uh, they are so scared that we're gonna tap into something we shouldn't on there, so, um, anyway, I asked George if he would run it, he says, yes, he says. Instead of going back there, David, and trying to give you estimate, he says, this is just a tiny little job, he said, can we do title materials? I'll ask you in the selectmen tonight, I think, you know, as long as it's just a couple of hundred dollars, I think we should just let him kinda put the thing in.
Yeah, if it's more than a hundred, I'd be surprised, we were talking about cat, maybe a fifty, eighty feet of cat. Yeah, if it's more than a hundred, I'd be surprised, we were talking about cat, maybe a fifty, eighty feet of cat six cable.
Yeah, but you, I mean, you gotta mount it, you gotta drill through all the floors, and not hit anything else.
Right, yeah.
It'll be a couple hundred, I'm sure, but I just didn't wanna make him come back, go assess it, drive back for that one, one last thing.
I have no issue with that, that's fine, I lean could.
It's a tiny amount, so I just wanna make sure we're ready by you guys.
Yeah, no.
We need it, so.
Okay, uh that's all I have, to you gentlemen, motion two adjourned.
Um I did have her buy. Toilet brush cleaners.
Okay, for cleaning.
And plungers for the two bathrooms.
Right.
And a clean group, and there was no soap in there, and then everything else, but no soap, so I had to get soap.
Have we adjourned yet?
Yeah.
Okay, most of them adjourned, okay. Now I can share something with you?